Mr. Garcia?
Yes.
Attorney Paul Richardson will also be joining us at the desk this evening.
Noted.
Thank you.
And we'll note him as present as well.
Thank you. Also, before we continue, I just want to make a quick announcement to everyone here. While the audio function is working and the meeting is being recorded, we just found out that the Zoom function is not. And so this evening, what we would ask is that when it is time, everyone, please take your phones out that cannon wheel and go live. And I would like my council colleagues to also do the same for tonight. We will go live on our pages and we will stream the portion of the meetings. I just wanted to say that. That being said, we will continue with invocation tonight. We are going to have Reverend Charles Boyer from Greater Mount Zion AMV Zion Church to give us the invocation. The other way.
Yeah, on one side.
And press the button, press the button. And there we go.
All right, how about that?
Thank you.
Let us pray. Lord, we thank you. We thank you for this meeting. We thank you for the mayor, the administration. We thank you for this council, council president. Thank you for all of the dignitaries in the house, and we thank you for the people. As the work of the people go forth, bless it. Guide all of this in your will. And as we think about sacred space and hallowed halls, may there be a mighty shout of glory on what takes place on this evening. This we pray in your most blessed name, and let the entire place say amen.
Thank you. Mr. Garcia?
Certainly, Madam President. Madam President, moving forward with the agenda, we've made a couple of changes, one including the approval of the consent agenda. However, prior to that, I will ask for your approval of communications and petitions.
Yes.
And if you want to ask for a motion to approve communications and petitions?
Yes, may I have a motion to approve communications and petitions?
So moved.
Thank you. Roll call, Councilwoman Edwards?
Yes.
Vice President Figaro-Keever?
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Feliciano?
Yes.
Motion carried. And Madam President, if there are no questions at this time, you want to ask for an approval of a consent, motion to approve the consent agenda this evening?
Yes, thank you. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda this evening? So moved.
Side check.
Thank you. Roll call, Councilwoman Edwards?
Yes.
Vice President Figaro-Keever?
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Feliciano?
Yes.
Motion carried. And on to ordinances for second reading of public hearing. Ordinance 24-62, an ordinance renaming the Trenton City Hall Annex as the Douglas H. Palmer Municipal Complex. Are there any members of the public? Are there any members of the public that wish to speak to this ordinance at this time? To security, if there is, there's a clipboard labeled with the ordinance in the back if anyone has signed up. I do have some individuals here myself with the sheet that's already filled. Thank you. And Madam President, it appears that we have 12, 13, 20 individuals signed up for a public comment this evening, for this ordinance this evening.
Thank you. I'd like to make the motion that we limit public comment to two minutes this evening.
Second. So moved.
So that was moved by?
Gonzalez.
Okay. Second from?
Edwards.
Thank you. Roll call, Councilwoman Edwards?
Yes.
Vice President Figaro-Keever?
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Feliciano?
Yes.
Motion carried. To the public, public comment will be limited to two minutes for each individual. You may address, well, only for this ordinance. And please note the council is not obligated to respond. We can start off with Mayor Reed this morning.
Can you press the button to turn the mic on, Mayor? Thank you, sir.
I'm not here that much, so thank you. Thank you, Mr. Clark and Madam President, distinguished council members, and all the distinguished guests and visitors today, and especially the family of Douglas H. Palmer. I notice Father Brian McCormick is here. That is, was my parish priest since I was the age of eight. So I'm really glad to see Father McCormick. But today, when we said the Pledge of Allegiance, the last phrase, "And justice for all," really implies that we are bringing justice to all and we're bringing recognition to all, and especially to a wonderful gentleman, former mayor Douglas H. Palmer, who served as the guiding light, not only for me when I first took office, but for countless others in the city. He's been a mentor and a steady hand, both during his time as mayor and the years that followed. His contributions to Trenton are far-reaching, and I'll leave that for the other commentators, because they all have their personal stories. That's what John Bailey is for. And his contributions are far-reaching, and I firmly believe that renaming City Hall is a fitting tribute to his legacy of leadership. Serving as mayor from 1990 to 2010, Mayor Palmer's 20-year tenure marked a period of significant growth and progress for Trenton. He was the first African-American mayor of our city, but more than that, he was a pioneer, someone who has dedicated his life to improving the quality of life for all our residents. His administration was defined by innovation, a focus on economic revitalization, and a steadfast commitment to uplifting our neighborhoods. His leadership extended beyond the borders of Trenton as he went on to serve as president of the U.S. Conference of Mayors, where he amplified our city's voice on the national stage. He is a legacy for this city, and it is most fitting that we do rename this City Hall complex the Douglas H. Palmer City Hall Complex. And even more so is his continuing legacy. Everyone in this dais has reached out to Douglas, and Douglas has reached out to us, fully extending his hand. Anyone could have walked in the sunset after 20 long years of service, and he does deserve a break. But he continues the work. He continues the health of the city. God bless him on his lasting legacy, and thank you, council, for giving him the recognition he dutifully deserves. God bless.
Mr. Dan Benson, county executive.
Thank you so much. It is always an honor and a pleasure to address this council. Happy to be with you once again, particularly on this wonderful occasion. Again, to my fellow elected officials, to the family members of Mayor Palmer. I could probably take two minutes just saying all the great things that Mayor Palmer has done in his life, the different titles. As the county executive, I'd like to take ownership of his title as a freeholder for 10 years, what we call county commissioners now. But I think his leadership with the National Conference of Democratic Mayors, two consecutive terms, which I think is, he may be the only one, or rare to occur, as consecutive president of the U.S. Conference of Mayors and one of the founding leaders of Mayors Against Legal Guns. But I could also just talk away about Mayor Palmer's legacy continues to strengthen Trenton and Mercer County. I see it every day in my job as we talk about ways the county can partner with our capital city. He was doing it as mayor many years ago. My predecessor is here, County Executive Pernetti. They had a relationship across the aisle to make things happen for the city. And it is a legacy that we hope to continue this time. I could talk about how he's been a mentor to so many young elected officials, including myself. I'm going to say I'm a young elected official. Let me say that. I first met Mayor Palmer as a high school senior at Hamilton West in apologist class. And he was maybe in his twenties as a young elected mayor, maybe, at the time. But it was great. Somebody's telling the real date there. He took the time to say hi to someone who wasn't even one of his residents, but knew who was interested in current events and politics and history. And he was willing to talk to me. And how amazing it is, number of years later, well, it's how many, that when I had the opportunity, with the support of the people of the city of Trenton and Mercer County, to be the next county executive, that he helped lead along with Janine Frisbee LaRue, who's here, my transition team as a special advisor, to bring all of his background to make sure that when we talked about the future of the county and its heart would be the capital city's. So it is extremely fitting that this council, hopefully today, will adopt this ordinance, because too often, our heroes are recognized posthumously or far too much later. When we can say thank you today, and we should. Because we know for generations to come, his impact on the city will be felt. I think it's time that we tell him thank you today. And there's no better fitting tribute than to name this complex after him. Thank you for all that you do.
John Bailey.
Mother Hazel Stewart is going to take the mic over John Bailey, and then John Bailey will come after Mother Hazel Stewart.
Yes, ma'am.
There's a lot can be said regarding Mayor Douglas H. Palmer performance as one of Trenton's former mayors. However, as the first black mayor of this city, Doug Palmer's legacy is marked by his tireless effort to improve the city economy, reduce crime, and enhance the quality of life for Trenton residents. His vision for safe, more prosperous, and exclusive Trenton guy is 20 years of tenure. For economic development, national leadership, Palmer's accomplishments reflect a deep commitment to public service and lasting impact on the community he served. Although his initiative, Douglas H. Palmer, left a mark on Trenton, paving the way for the future leaders to continue the city's progress. Therefore, I am publicly announcing my support, which includes those individuals who requested me to speak on their behalf. The name of Mayor of Trenton City Hall Annex in honor of the former mayor, Douglas H. Palmer. Thank you for listening to me.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Hazel. Thank you so much for this opportunity. Let me just say it's good being home. It's good being back in Mercer County. It's good being back in the capital city. When you come over that bridge, what you see and what you visualize is a sign that's been there for how many years? Plenty. What Trenton makes, the world pays. Well, today, we're about to make a big decision. I ask you to turn around and look at the wall behind you, which is reflective of two things, hope and history. Today, we're about doing the hope piece. Hope that everybody steps up. Hope that the decision is made. Hope that we leave here all feeling good about the decision that was made. The historical part goes back long before Douglas. Goes back to the beginning of this nation. So being here 200, 300 years later, making a decision about taking a black man and putting him in a position of influence in this city, is not only historical, but it's paramount. And it's a testament to everybody that's in this room. You ought to be happy for yourself. You ought to be happy for Doug. But more importantly, you're going to be happy for the city of Trenton. Doug stood up for the city of Trenton for a long time, but no one else did. We can come here tonight, some of us for and some of us against, but one thing we cannot do is say that this young man did not ever not stand up for the city of Trenton. We see him as a son, but not only a son of the city. We see him as a favorite son of the city. And it's okay to disagree. It's okay to not be supportive. But it's not okay not to embrace history and not to embrace truth. And so I come here this evening, 2,000 miles away, just to be here just for this. I want folks to know how important Doug Palmer is, not only to the city, but to me. When my wife passed away, Doug made sure that whatever I needed, be it the funeral expenses, be it coming there to never deceiving, was his priority. Same with Sam Frisbee. So I have a different perspective on Mayor Palmer. I love him. Many of you love him. And all I ask tonight is that y'all love him and make this unanimous vote to make Trenton City Hall named after Douglas H. Palmer. And I thank you for your time.
Everything everyone is saying is so wonderful. We caught up in it, but you're going to have to run that timer.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, Madam President.
Thank you.
Next up, and we'll be clocked, Mr. Palmer.
Good evening. Council president, members of council, council mayor, elected officials. I'm very, very happy to be here, even though I'm on the clock now. I'm still happy to be here, and I'm going to keep this short. I've known Doug Palmer for well over 40 years. We got acquainted with one another way back when he was working for the Trenton School Board and I was working for the county government. And you know, the thing that had struck me about Doug in all of those years is that he was a marvelous, wonderful friend. And he was a good man. And when we, the county was about, were about to build the baseball stadium, I called him and I said, you know, Doug, I have this idea. And he listened. And he says, well, you know, Bob, you're crazy. But I'm going to be there with you. And as we went along and as the project got difficult, I called him and I said, Doug, I'm really going to need your help getting through the maze of bureaucracy and working with the state and all that. He said, you got it, Bob. And he said, I'm going to stay out of your way when I need to, and I'm going to be there when you need me. And he was. So this tribute this evening is about a man who, not because he was the first black mayor of the city of Trenton, not because he was here for two decades, more than two decades, not because he was the president of the Conference of Mayors for such a long time and made such an impact on that organization and the nation at large, but because of his heart. This is a man who didn't care what color you were, what party you were in, as witnessed by me, white and Republican. He didn't care what your religion was. What he cared about was doing the right thing. And his heart is in this building. It's on those streets. It's with these people. And for his name to be on this building, it's not only a tribute to him, but all the people that he had served over the years and quite some sacrifice to himself many, many times. That's what it's about. It's about that man's heart. So if you're going to do any justice to all and all this evening, recognize that and recognize the man that he is and the fact that his name should be on this building. Thank you for this.
Justly. Oh, sorry. That's right, I apologize. That's right. Annette Lartig.
Hello. My name is Lartig, and I'm happy to be here tonight. To the ladies and gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, esteemed members of the council, council, thank you. You have a tough job every day, not just today. And I want you to know that there are many of us who appreciate you. Mayor Fisierio and the clergy. And at this time, the clergy who are here, please stand. We'd like to acknowledge you and thank you for your ongoing support and leadership and advocacy for this nation and community. Thank you. Thank you. And to the initiative team, please stand. All of you, please stand. Those of you who started this then, in the middle, and now, that includes those of you on the dais, please stand. I'd also like to reach out to the African-American Collaborative of Mercer County. Please stand. Latasha Burke sends her best wishes to all. She is recovering from cancer. It is a proud and deep appreciation that I stand before you today to acknowledge the importance of this initiative. It goes beyond the simple fact that he was mayor. When you look around Trenton, you see his work. You see his footwork. And that's important. When you look at his family, whom he loves and spoils, especially his sister, you see his work, right? And so I'd just like to say today that this initiative not only represents recognition of Mayor Palmer's exceptional leadership, but, and I say exceptional because I served with him and he kept me in check. I was on council then, Lomond Caddelia and a few others, right? And so his exceptional leadership, but also a testament to the legacy that he's left, not just here at City Hall, but in this entire community. So today, I'd just like to say, Mayor Palmer, your commitment to the people of Trenton and your entire list work to improve the lives of all residents have left and endeavored on our city's history. History, I said. The renaming is not simply about an annex or a building. It's about ensuring that the legacy of this man and his contributions to this city are known now and forevermore. And so today, the well-being of all Mayor Palmer has worked for, and we just simply like to honor him in a very tangible way. So to all of you who are here today, please remember this. The legacy of the mayor and even the council is important because you guys are the guiding light for our community. Mayor Palmer, thank you for your light.
Mamalou Duli.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
I was born in '95, so I'm not going to, you know, talk too much about the term. As a young leader, though, I can't speak on the fact that when I was introduced to Doug Palmer and I actually had a one-on-one with him. He was very genuine, and he took me in under his arms. So he asked me what did I need, and I said, oh, let me get an interview. And then we did the interview. So during the interview with Doug Palmer, I realized a lot of different things, and I learned a lot of different things. I thought he was going to talk about, you know, how the great programs he had, a lot of, you know, a lot of his accomplishments. But he didn't. What he really spoke about to me was the trials of leadership, especially in the time where he was in and being the first black mayor in the challenges. As a young man, having that conversation with him, I think it really showed me the path of leadership because even, even at the age he was, what he remembered in the '90s was a girl who was murdered by the police, how he had to deal with that and how that still weighed on his mind in the present day. He talked about the way he had to prepare leadership. You know, so I knew from that moment talking to him that this was a genuine leader that was really in it for his people. And he still remembered the little details and the important things. And I seen the hardships of leadership. I seen all of the different trials and tribulations. I know he had the biggest smile on his face. I could see there was a lot of different challenges he faced as a man. And there I could see, you know, the path that I would want to take, the shoulders and the shoes that I would want to wear, you know, as a young man, and what it would take to even get to close to that level. So it was very inspiring. We had a short relationship. I can't speak too much about it. But what I do know is that it was like talking to a history book. You know, and he is history. That's it.
Good evening, council president, vice president of council and council members. My name is David Plonton, and I reside at 861 Leaver Avenue in the city of Trenton. I have been a citizen of the city of Trenton since 1960. And I'm here tonight to talk about renaming, or naming, the annex to Doug Palmer, Douglas H. Palmer Municipal Complex. Doug has been the mayor of Trenton for 20 years. During his tenure, he has made a difference for many of his citizens. And I could speak for hours about his accomplishments. However, I want to speak about his leadership with the residents of Marbury Street. As most of you know, Marbury Street would flood whenever there was a severe storm in the city of Trenton. Most of these homes were owner-occupied. And on every occasion, when it flooded, Mayor Palmer would show up and be there for the residents of Marbury Street. He would make sure that the police department was there to monitor the back of every structure in every alley to Marbury Street. And during that time, not one resident of Marbury Street ever filed a complaint of anything being stolen from their homes. And that is a testament to his leadership. Once the waters receded, Doug would show up in his nice shoes, not boots, his nice shoes, his nice suits, and walk in the mud, walk in the mud with the residents and make sure that we would be okay. He would make sure that this fire department pumped every home basement from the water. Once the water was pumped out of the basements, he would make sure that his inspection department came in to make sure those structures were safe. Once they were gone, he would have the health department come in and make sure that every resident had what they needed. By the way, one thing I forgot. When we were out of our homes, Doug made sure that we had a place to stay at no cost to none of the residents. When those waters receded, we were actually out of our house for about two days. Within two days after the waters receded, every resident was in the home. Doug did not stop coming and visiting us until he knew we were all in our homes and we were all safe. Doug, I appreciate everything that you've done for us then. And when we made it, when the federal government decided that they no longer wanted to remedy the issue with Marbury Street residents, they wanted to buy those properties, they gave it to Doug. He formed a task force for the residents of Marbury Street. Ursula Lee Jackson lived at 43 Marbury Street, had her home stolen by a predatory lender. She called me up. I called Doug up, and Doug dropped what he was doing, and he came to her aid. He stopped the predatory lenders from...
Two seconds. Two seconds, yes. You got it.
He stopped the predatory lenders from taking her home and then brokered a deal. When the home was sold, she was able to purchase another home in South Trenton. That's the legacy of Doug Palmer. That's the legacy of Doug Palmer with Marbury Street. Thank you.
Deborah Godstone. Not here? Understood. Cordelia Staden.
Good evening, esteemed members of council. I'm here to speak in favor of ordinance twenty-four zero sixty-two, naming the municipal annex to Douglas H. Palmer Municipal Complex. You know, I was here two weeks ago when I introduced those petitions from all the people in this city expressing their desire to have this honor bestowed on our beloved mayor. And there's not much more to say between the time I brought the petitions and now, because he's still just as great as he always was. I've known him a very, very long time. A lot of people know that we are very good friends. I always teach people and tell them, I knew the mayor when he was just a player. But he's, but he's come a very long way. And he was in this building, but you know, we do each other like that, so it's all right. I love him, and I know that most of the people in this room love him as well. He leaves his footprint everywhere, from the school districts to the neighborhoods, from the police department, fire department, recreation, human services, the TLC program that he initiated years ago, which afforded all the children in Trenton their immunizations. He has just been everywhere. He's just been everywhere. He is in this building as we speak. His spirit is everywhere. His heart is, I don't know how big. He deserves this more than anyone I could ever think of, and I'm hoping that this passes. Now, I do wanna tell you, everybody ain't gonna hear him speak. So if you're here in support of ordinance twenty-four zero sixty-two, please stand so council understands just how much we wanna see this happen. So, I'm really hoping to be, already seems to, I wanna thank you for your time. More than that, I'm looking forward to your affirmative vote. Thank you.
Pat Wood. Pat Wood. Uh, okay. Diane Campbell.
Good evening. Although I did not sign up this evening, and then to record you, I will speak once again on behalf of Douglas H. Palmer. This city hall should have some memory, legacy forever, that will indicate the kind of mayor and leader that Douglas Palmer was in the time that he was there. What I would like to bring to everyone's attention is that we talk about Marbury Street, we talk about all the other kinds of things that Douglas did, but what I felt was significant was the way that he honored children. He honored children with little league. He made them all kinds of nice uniforms. He honored children even when they went away from Trenton into private schools. He went there, checked on them, and he was always, always looking at the children and supporting them. So as you consider the ordinance, please make sure that in terms of the way that Douglas Palmer managed himself, it was hope. It was everything. And I support Douglas Palmer, along with my family, because we have known him for lifetimes, my mother's lifetime, and also mine and other people in my family. Thank you.
Tracy Seifert. Okay. The next up was Miss Hazel Stewart. Lance Lopez.
Good evening. My name is Lance Lopez, and I am a ninety percent disabled veteran. When I joined the military in nineteen ninety, I lived in the city of Trenton. I actually lived in two. But I remember the days back in nineteen ninety when I went to Trenton Central High School's graduation, and Douglas H. Palmer became the mayor of this city, and the sense of pride that the students at Trenton Central High School had, and the parents, and the faculty, and the whole entire city had, and the enthusiasm that everyone had in this city when Douglas H. Palmer had become the mayor of this great city. It was the same pride that I had when I was in the military. It was the same pride that I carried throughout my careers. It is the same pride that I hope you all, as council, will have by voting unanimously, unanimously to name this complex after one of the greatest city leaders that our city has ever had, one of the leaders who this country has benefited from having. That bridge says it all day long, Trenton makes and the world takes, and the world has benefited from Douglas H. Palmer becoming the mayor of the great city of Trenton, New Jersey. That you all unanimously voted in favor of Douglas H. Palmer being named, being named at the city hall. Thank you.
Good evening, Council President, colleagues. Um, I met Doug Palmer in nineteen eighty-nine. I was not a Trenton resident. Uh, my brother used to manage Mr. Owens, and he had a birthday party for his daughter. And Mr. Palmer was out there smiling. I kinda chucked it off because I didn't know he was out there campaigning. But you know, he was smiling. He was talking to everybody, all well and good. But anyway, for Mr. Palmer, the Trentonians, as you all call yourselves, y'all voted for this man five times. So, he had to do something for the city of Trenton. And even though he is not mayor today, he is still out there doing wonderful things for the city of Trenton. And for the Trentonians, do not make this city hall named after him. You are robbing this man of his dignity because he cares for each and every one of you. So I say, please, reach down in your heart and do the right thing. Give this man his flowers while he is here. Do not wait until he pass away, and then I have to look at each and every one of you on Facebook with a picture of him. Thank you and have a good evening.
Uh, let's see, let's see if I got this one right here. Perleene Waters.
Good evening, everyone. I stand in favor of the City Council in support of the ordinances for you, Doug Palmer. Known you since nineteen sixty-eight, being my uncle's neighbor, and you were my Delta Team Leader. I was told when I signed the sheet that it was for all the ordinances, so I'm here to support the one for Mayor Palmer, as well as the one for Mr. Bingham. And if I may, to save time, can I go into the ordinance while I was here because I'm just asking you all to vote in favor of naming the annex, Douglas H. Palmer Annex. And one of the reasons for doing that is because Mayor Palmer supported us, the Martin House Family Programs, particularly the Better Community Housing, when we were providing the opportunity for homeownership for very low and low-income families. So, with that being said, if everyone would be patient with me, in honor of Father Brian McCormick, we, Better Community Housing, Martin House Community for Justice Foundation, Martin House Diocese of Trenton, Martin House Clothing Store, which is now the Better Community Housing Thrift Store, the Martin House Learning Center, which is now CYO East State Street, Doorway to Hope, Saint Martin Center for Health Services, Young Adult Men of Trenton Initiative, the Martin House Boys and Girl Scout Troops. All of these worked with Mayor Palmer under his administration, as well as the previous administration, Arthur Holland. So as we, and at this time, I'd like all of you that are here with me for the ordinance number sixty, honoring to name East State Street at Chambers in honor of Father Brian McCormick, to please stand. We had brought Father Brian with us for those of you who, uh, I mean, who are actually, who are in this town. And that topic, we did our least, get along. You remember being an S, and well, leaving at that. So, Father Brian always had a saying, leave a place better than you found it. And that he did. He left East State Street, especially the seven hundred block, the eight hundred, and the nine hundred, the ten hundred, and the eleven hundred blocks, other streets and avenues as well. Walnut, Thompson, South Cook of the Wilbur Section, and Trenton's East Ward better than he found them in nineteen sixty-eight. When he came to East State Street, seven eighty-four, he left twenty newly constructed homes. In two thousand and twelve, when he retired, a new Greg Grant Park and two newly constructed buildings, which he called the Ten Tower, Ten, I'm sorry, the Twin Towers of Trenton. Now, Better Community Housing Thrift Store, CYO East State Street. With these buildings, he continued the services and programs and activities and place of gathering in the community for civic, recreational, and social events to meet the needs of the people in the Wilbur Section of Trenton. The seven hundred, eight hundred, nine hundred blocks of East State Street from Marbury Street to South Cook shows the process of homeownership and empowerment of community civic involvement. Kyler to North and South Logan as well. He rehired and built newly constructed homes on Locust Street, Thompson Street, Gerard Avenue, when Allen Malley moved us over to the East Trenton area. We had to go over there and do houses on Turrow. But not wanting to take up any more of anyone's time, I just wanna ask you all to vote for the second reading for Douglas H. Palmer and Father Brian McCormick ordinances that they be named in his honor. Thank you for listening. And this is his second book, Creating Global Oneness. So I give it to City Council for you all to share and stay together in your oneness.
Next we have... I'm not even sure. We're gonna skip this one for a moment and go to Marv Cherry.
Good evening, Council President, members of City Council, elected officials. And I noticed that, uh, Mr. Palmer arrived right on time as usual. I'm a thirty-five-year football official, so I'm used to being on the two-minute clock. One thing that, I don't know, I haven't said this publicly, but Doug Palmer did me a huge favor. When my oldest son was coming home from college looking for a job, he gave him a job which probably allowed me to stay in the house and he could get out. And he's still working, so thank you. I, uh, Trenton is a historic city. Very historic history, storied history, and we denoted and recognized many things that have happened because of that history. Part of Trenton's history is the election of the first, uh, black mayor. That was a significant event in the history of the city. Tonight, I am hoping that we will add to the history by naming the, um, annex after, uh, Douglas H. Palmer. I support this ordinance because it is well-deserved. Significant things that happen in a historic city should be denoted and recognized and acknowledged. So, I hope that'll be congratulations based on the crowd here. I suspect that it will be. I also hope that it will be unanimous. And, uh, thank you for giving my son that job.
Roland Pott.
Good evening, Council. I'm also here to support the, um, the ordinance. And, um, my experience moving to Trenton in nineteen ninety-five, it was, uh, I was a young man. I was twenty-three years old. And I was just finding myself, figuring out how to make my way in the world. I had finished college, and I was excited about what was going on around me. I was meeting new people. And right there, um, was Mayor Palmer speaking so proudly and, um, and showing the way, being a great example for people that were coming up in the world at that age. And the thing I wanna say is that I moved into Mill Hill, and he found a way of creating partnerships. There were people that wouldn't support historic preservation. There were people that would. And he found a way to create bridges between, um, the historic preservationists and the people that sort of were like, no, knock it down, you know? And that was, really made an impression on me, and I continued to work in historic preservation after that. He also worked with partnerships across party lines. Bob Prunetti was the county executive at the time, and they had the Opportunity Triangle, which they had envisioned, which was the ballpark, the arena, and the hotel. And it was the downtown, the Chambersburg, and the river. So it connected the city in a new and innovative way. And these projects came to fruition under the leadership of these two men who worked together across party lines to get something done, building support within the community. And that made a huge impression to see that happen in front of my eyes, having moved there in ninety-five and seeing the ballpark being built, seeing these, these projects come to fruition. And, um, that made a big impact on me. And then, um, you know, he also officiated my wedding, which was in the William Trent House. And, um, I remember showing up and, um, you know, it was a Quaker wedding in which, uh, people, the husband and wife, or the, the two people married each other. So Palmer showed up, and he, I think he was expecting to kind of pronounce us and make a lot of speeches. And, uh, here were two Quakers marrying each other, and he didn't have to do a whole lot. But the beauty of it was that he was so, uh, he still officiated it so well and was so humble and welcoming to the people who had come from out of town into Trenton. And they left with such a great impression. That's it. Thank you. Thank you.
Is there an individual last name of Schiller? Schiller? Shuler? All right. Maybe that's not... That's really not gonna depress us for the nomination in this room, so I do apologize to the individual whose name was eligible. Uh, moving on with, uh, moving on then, Mad President, I believe that's all the individuals we have for comment on this ordinance at this time. Uh, if it's your wish, if you want to ask for a motion to approve.
May I have a motion to approve this amendment back end?
With a motion and a second and open the possible discussion, are there any, is there any members of the council that have anything additional to say to this ordinance at this time?
Council, at this time, you can speak to the ordinance if you'd like to. So we'll start with Councilwoman.
Good evening, everyone. It's great to see a full house here today, um, especially in honor of such a great man that leaves, that he created a great legacy, not only for his family, but for the city of Trenton. And it's an honor to vote for this ordinance, and, um, I just want to say thank you for everything that you've done for the city, for myself personally. You are Mayor Palmer, who instilled public service in me, aside from my parents. He was the very first elected official that I met at the age of seven in the Hermitage Library, when he was running for reelection for his second term. And he read a book to us, and he told us who he was, and what the mayor does, and how that related to us on a level that we understood, our libraries that we were sitting in, our schools, the budgets, the parks, all the services that we needed, the after-school programs, that he worked with the council to get these things done. And it intrigued me, and I can say, nearly thirty years later, I'm standing here on this day, and I give credit to you, Mayor Palmer. Again, it's an honor, and thank you all for coming out tonight.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Well, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Um, the man, the myth, the living legend, Mayor Palmer, um, you have been an incredible, incredible figure in my life since I was a young girl. I remember speaking to kind of a Councilwoman Edward Said, when I was in the fifth grade, I remember us, my teacher putting everyone that was running for office, and we all had to vote in the class, so I just remember your names sticking out. And then when I met you years later, I was impressed at how you embraced my father, who at the time was very, he was in opposition of you at that time. And so the love that you had for my father, especially when he passed away, you stepped up, you were one of the first people that were there for me. Um, and even today, you know, reading to the kids, I've been out and we're reading to the kids to this day. You have not left us. Whenever we call you, you are there for sound advice. So I want to say I appreciate you, I love you, and I am so honored to be a part of this historic moment and renaming this building after you.
Mayor Palmer, um, this is well, well-deserved. You've been a part of the past in the city, but you've also been a part of everybody's life in this room. You've touched everybody in this room, and if you look around this room right now, all you see is smiles. Everybody in this room is proud of how you've been in everybody's corner, you've been a mentor, you've listened to people, you've been an advocate for this great city. So thank you. This is an easy vote for me, yes, because well-deserved. Thank you, Mayor Palmer. Thank you.
Councilwoman Williams?
Thank you, ma'am. Mayor Palmer, um, there's so many different things to say, but I think everyone here tonight is saying them by the presence, but I just would like to say a couple of things. One of the greatest things I've always admired about you is even in disagreement, you can be amenable, you can be respectful, and you always want to get another point of view. And you always want to show leadership, whether it was in times of the city when we were on a rise, if it was times in the city where there was turmoil, if it was times in the city when we weren't sure where we were going, you were a rock for this community. And your name deserves to be on this annex. And I know, oh, we won't even acknowledge some of the negativity towards it, but I'll say this, when you're the first, it's an incredible thing, because no one could imagine someone in that position told a issue. And thank you for being that person, because I know in nineteen ninety, when I was coming home from college and an election was a month away, I asked my parents, I wasn't really interested in politics, and I said, "So who do we vote for?" And my dad said, "You're voting for Doug Palmer." We came to four fifty and Sam Holden Avenue, knocked on our door, we talked to him, I liked his smile, I liked his positivity, and he sensed he has a vision for Trenton. And that's what we need for this city, we haven't had it in a long time. So thank you for being our mayor, thank you for leading us, thank you for putting us on the national stage, and thank you for your mentorship. As we come on to council, I know, uh, so myself, having reached out to you for advice on things, you've always been there, and congratulations, sir, thank you. And as been said, I'm really happy to see that you do get your flowers, because that's really super important, particularly at these times when we're too often waiting. So thank you, sir, Douglas.
Council Vice President Figueroa Kenberg?
Good evening. Um, Mayor Palmer, my first introduction of you was while I was in elementary school. I was getting some sort of honor, because you honored all of us kids all the time, whether it was scholastically or for sports, extracurricular, or something. We got honored for something all the time. And we came to City Hall so often because you were always honoring us, and that is throughout my elementary, junior high, and high school experience here in Trenton. And what I remember of you was always being so positive. You made sure we were recognized, and you did well to include the youth and keep us focused and inspired, helped us to realize that there was greatness for us in Trenton and beyond. So I want to really thank you for that, because you stuck in my mind especially. And I remember the first time I got a phone call from you, and I'm going to meet you, but I was gonna run for office for the first time in twenty eighteen, and I was so nervous and so intimidated to go sit down with you, and you were so humble and so genuine and just so cool. And you were just this real person, but you were just this great person that was like untouchable, it seemed like my entire life. So I want to thank you for that as well. I can only imagine serving as mayor is no easy feat, especially for the city of Trenton, but you have done it with great stride, great pride, taken everything under the chin, and you have just remained humble, loyal, and just fantastic to see the people you have served in Trenton while you were in office and now. And as you can see by this room, everybody is in awe of that. So I'm honored and humbled to be part of history today, to be part of this dynamic council, that was able to have this ordinance in front of us, to be able to name the annex at City Hall after you, and to be able to vote for this, because we are gonna go down in history as much as you are. And I just want to say that I'm glad we're able to do this while you're still alive, while you can bask in it, while you can enjoy it, and you can say this is your great accomplishment, and this is the impression that you have left on us here in the city of Trenton. So congratulations, um, Doug, and kudos to everybody in this room who has stood up for this ordinance before today and today.
So I would just like to say to Doug Palmer, thank you for all of the work that you have done in the past, the present, and the things that you will do in the future. Thank you for having your authentic spirit whenever you engage with people. Thank you for telling it exactly like it is. Thank you for being a fair man. Thank you for being a good man. Thank you for being a comedian. A comedian. Rashawn, can you slide to the right a little bit so I can see? Thank you. Thank you. All I can say is, is that, you know, this is a great moment for me, this is a great moment for us. Um, I am pleased that I have the honor to sit with this council to make this happen. We've done some great things together thus far, um, and I think that this is just probably one of the most awesomest things that we will have done together, and I'm grateful and blessed to have the opportunity to sit and be a part of this. I thank you for the example that you set about family, about love, the love that, you know, you show for your wife, for your child, for your father, for, you know what I mean? Just for your family, everybody, for Palmer, for your sister, for everyone. You've always been that man with that tremendous heart. And then the heart that you have for the city of Trenton, right? It goes even beyond your tenure as mayor. Trenton will always be a part of you, and you will always be a part of the very fabric of this city. And so it is my honor tonight to go with the affirmative when the time comes for the annex to be renamed the Mayor Douglas H. Palmer Municipal Complex. And so now at this time, I will let the Councilwoman, who not only served on the committee with everyone to make this happen, but also the Councilwoman that brought this, uh, ordinance forward, it is presented by Councilwoman Teska Frisbee, would like for you to close this out with remarks.
So thank you, thank you, Council President, appreciate your generosity. Doug, so tonight is one big thank you. And so this will be, is, when you look around and you see everybody that's here, even the ones that aren't here, there were countless number of people, my husband included, Sam Frisbee, who's in L.A., and he sends his, um, regards, who wanted to be here just to honor you. Folks kept asking the question, "Why the rush? Why the rush? Why the rush?" And the response was, "Why not? Why wait? Why put it off? Say, why put it off for tomorrow for what you couldn't do today? We wanted to give you your flowers while you could smell them. We wanted to give you your flowers while Chrissy could enjoy them, while your dad could enjoy them, while Nyla could enjoy, while your wife, your sister, and your family members could all, while we, the community, who have benefited from you being here, could all enjoy it." So to have the support of the city mayor, so many elected officials, many that are here, many that were here, many that really wanted to be here who couldn't be here, to me, is a testament to who you are. It is, um, a testament to the obstacles that you've overcome. And when I think about it, it reminds me of the story of when President Barack Obama had a little boy who said, "Can I touch your hair?" And he wanted to know, "Is that like, are you really like me?" You made a difference, you started the transition to let other little children who look like you know that they can, they also can do it, that it is possible, that this space also belongs to them. Yes, they belong also in America. So it is about that and then some, and it is about the legacy that you leave behind. You leave a longstanding legacy for many of us to follow after, and we will all benefit from it. We are all currently benefiting from it. So I just wanted to tell you thank you. On behalf of my husband, Samuel Frisbee, Commissioner Frisbee, who could not be here, he sent his love, he sent his regard, the reason why we came to Trenton, 'cause you wouldn't let us keep our brand of home that we had just built in relative county and my free, I'm not gonna get into all that, okay? I just want to say, this is not just for you, it is for the community. And when we put out the petitions, when we put out the call to have the idea, let alone have an action process, that we wanted to have City Hall or any part of it named after you, it was a resounding yes. When I spoke to each and every one of my colleagues, not once, but twice, every one of them, like, absolutely, he deserves it. Every one of them said, "He deserves it." So to my colleagues, I say thank you, because we are making history here tonight, but you are the one who did the work. So for doing the work, we say thank you, and we commend you.
Mr. Garcia, I would like to move for the vote.
Certainly, Vice President, I believe as we move in second, and you have made comments and discussion, please, uh, hold the board. Councilwoman Edwards?
Yes.
Vice President Figueroa Kenberg? Councilwoman Frisbee?
Absolutely.
Councilman Harrison? Councilwoman Williams?
Of course, yes.
Council President Feliciano?
Absolutely, yes.
I just want to say, before the mayor gets up here to speak, and that's what I call him all the time, that on behalf of his number-one cheerleader, his mom, Lee Dorothy Palmer, and my dad, who unfortunately could not make it because he was not feeling well, but you have bestowed such an honor on our family that we shall never forget, and he is deserving of all the praise.
Okay, I'll be, I'm gonna try to be quick. I'm sorry I was late, but you know, I, anyway, I'm sorry I was late. First of all, giving honor to God is first of my life. Uh, I want to first and foremost thank the committee, uh, for doing this. For many years, they still didn't want to name something, I don't want to name anything after me, I don't, I don't, I don't. And then finally, uh, Teska, you just took the bull by the horns and got the committee together and said, "We're gonna do this." And, uh, I relented, uh, and I'm, my heart is so warm, so humble, honored, uh, to see all of you here, and this means so much, as my sister said, uh, not just for me, and just like the council said, not just for me, but for this city. Man, this is a great city. This is a great city. And I just know that the feeling of love that we all have in this building, in this room right now, that's what we need to keep together, to push away the naysayers, the people that always want to tear us down, because with the energy we have here and out in the community, we will do great things, we will achieve what you want. You said to me that I, you know, motivated you, this council and Mayor Fisher, you motivate me. You motivate me. Because you have shown by being elected to office that if you work together, things can happen for this city, and we need that to happen. So thank you again, very, very much. She's very busy. Harley, we go to things a lot, but I'm glad that she's always been here and been my, my backbone, uh, all the time. And I want to tell you, when I first became African-American mayor, I see so many council people that served with me, I won't mention all the names, but I know Frank Sorrello, and of course Bob Pernetti, and all of the... but I know Frank Sorrello, and of course Bob Purnetti, and all the folks that helped. I wouldn't be able to do any of these things without them. Without my chief of staff, Phil Watson, my first chief of staff, Mike Cavan, and Rocky Peterson, and all those people which, at the appropriate time when we have been unveiling, hopefully they'll all be able to make it here, Renee Hayes, and all of them. I wouldn't have been able to do anything without those people working and believing in me and believing in the city. I wouldn't have been able to do any of those things, as you recognize, without the citizens of Trenton, without the people. Because if you don't have the people behind you, you're not going to accomplish anything. I was blessed and fortunate to have people work with me. I was blessed and fortunate to have Father Brian McCormick. It's just so gratifying that this day is ours. It's not mine, this is ours, for all the work that you did. Because that's alright, because if you're pushing for the right things, you can find cotton ground. And the last thing I want to say is, is that I, when I became first African-American mayor of Trenton, it was like overwhelming to me because I knew that, oh man, there's a lot of, a lot of work to do and people are looking at me, and at the time, 26,000 votes were cast. And I won by 297, Trish Lee, Pat Hood, and Annette, and Cordina. Y'all know the numbers. 26,000 votes, and Andrew Bob, of course. 26,000 votes, and I only won by 297 votes. Most of all the black people voted for me, all the white folks voted for my dear friend and a great man and a great former mayor, Carmen Armenti. And the Latino vote was split down the middle. But we recognized that we had to big people work together, that I was mayor for all the people. We were able to do that through tough times, through revow, through a lot of things. The last thing I want to say is this, this is a funny story, you said I'm a comedian, but when I really realized the impact that I had on little kids, because I didn't really think about the impact I had on, you know, little, you know, little kids. I really didn't think about it until this one day. This young boy just came up to me and he said, "Can I have your autograph?" And back then, it was like, it was like new to me. People wanted to take my autograph. They wanted my autograph. So we didn't have any paper. And he said, "Put it on my shirt, put it on my T-shirt, write it on my shirt." I said, "Oh, no, I'm not writing on your shirt. Your mom ain't gonna come after me if I wrote it on your shirt." So he says, "Uh, uh, write it on my hand, write it on my hand." I said, "Okay, I'll write it on your hand." So I wrote my autograph on his hand. I swear to God, it's a true story. And he said, "Oh, man, I'm never going to wash my head again." I didn't think nothing of it. Three days later, we're at the Trenton High Football Game, and during halftime, I'm on the field, this little kid comes down, "Mayor Palmer, remember, remember me?" I said, "Yeah." I lifted his hand, he's standing, "Pitching plaque." I said, "Son, you gotta wash your hands. You gotta wash your hands." "I got some paper now, I'll give you my autograph." You know those things they have on the field, you pump wood and they drink it out of there? I pumped and pumped his hand up and went and washed his hands. That's when I really realized that not only seniors and blacks and whites, Latinos and others were counting on me, but the young people in this city were counting on me. And the young people in this city are counting on all of us. And I pledge to you, this is just going to continue to motivate me even more to make this great city of ours and the city I love even greater. And it's through love, working together, agreeing to be disagreeable but not being disagreeable, but working together for the best of this city, because we are a capital city and we are working. Thank you, God bless you, I'll see you very soon.